Oh, yeah. Claire?
Come on up, come on all the way up. And you're gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on all the way up, come on all the way up. Okay? Do you, do you all, you all know the Pledge of Allegiance, right? Absolutely, okay. I'm so glad all of you stayed around. How did you like meeting Chief Thomas and going through the police department? Pretty cool, huh? Yeah, you don't want to be there, you just want to visit, right?
Okay, thank you. I'd like to, uh, I'd like to call our city council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance with Act 36.
Hey, guys. Everybody's in the hall. The pledge, everybody's in the hall. You guys are in uniform. Ready?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have to shake everybody's hand. Shake everybody's, uh, he's working so hard for us. And now, you can watch yourselves on television.
Thank you, guys. I have a cold, everybody, I'm gonna wave.
My hand's super cold.
I have a cold, I'm just gonna wave.
On TV. Thanks for coming by.
I have a cold.
Come on, give me the bump, wave. Give me the bump. Give me the bump.
Come on, we're gonna do this the right way.
Thanks for coming.
You want, you're rich?
Give me the bump, buddy, give me the bump. There you go, there you go. Give me the bump.
I got it, I got it.
It's your fault, it's your fault they're getting all wobbly up again.
You too?
You do not need to stay, thank you, yes, you are welcome to leave. And don't forget, you could be, you can watch yourselves on Tech TV. This, this meeting is televised, so, thank you for coming to visit us. MacIver?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Marques?
Here.
Kenny? Clistic?
Here.
Belzak?
Here.
Six present. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is questions, comments, announcements of a general nature. Does anyone in the audience want to address us on any topics? It does not have to be an item that's on the agenda, but something you want to talk about. Then let's move on to the approval of the minutes of March 4th. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, second of it, by Alderman MacIver. Any additions or deletions? I pointed out a Scrivener's error, but that's the only change I've noted. Anybody else have any additions or deletions? Then the roll, please. Marques?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent. The minutes have been approved, and the next item is receiving of communications to, any of the Aldermen have communications to share?
I do.
And Vaughn?
You can go first, though.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two quick items. First one, gentleman John Sfendrom at, I believe, 7807 Sawyer, I have to double check one later. But AT&amp;T and ComEd still has left sort of a mess in his backyard, so I don't know if you want me to reach out to him, Dan, or if you want to. I do have some pictures that I can, I can pass along, so.
7807 Sawyer?
I believe so, yeah. Kenny Corner for me, so.
And just confirm that.
7809, yeah, maybe nine, I'll confirm.
Yeah.
And then, second item, the treasure at the townhomes at High Point Court was at, this is for Chief Thomas, so.
Oh, thanks.
So that's all I have for Dan. For Chief Thomas, was just mentioning if he could see a few more extra patrols out there. They haven't seen any crime or anything, but they'd just like to see Darien Police stop out once in a while. High Point Court is sort of that one street off of Frontage Road, so.
It's the Portsmoke.
Correct, yeah, so it's easy to forget about that one little area there, so, if they have a chance, so, that's all I have.
Alderman Vaughn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have a few, just two. First, there was an accident at 67 and Claretton Hills Road recently, and so I just wanted to bring this to the attention of the council again. I know this has been brought up before with the intersection at 67 and Claretton Hills Road. Over the last five years, we've had 32 accidents at that intersection. Only one was fatal, but it's been a huge concern from the residents in that area, wanting a stop sign. The moment that accident happened, Mayor Trilla from Willowbrook reached out, some of the trustees from Willowbrook reached out, and they said, "We have to do something about that section." So I want to bring it up again and see if we could at least approve some funds to get a couple of stop signs. There's two there now. I think the intersections over the years have been built out for, for a street light, but it wasn't feasible. But I'd love to get, you know, two stop signs going from the north and south, on the north and south ends of the, of the street there. I think it's a huge concern, I mean, we haven't had too many fatalities, but, you know, one is too many. I think it will be in our best interest, I don't know what would happen if someone took legal action against us if we didn't do it, I mean, I'm not.
You'd get more legal acti- activity if you did put signs up, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it's, what did all, what did Mayor Trilla suggest?
Well, I, I confirm that it is our intersection, so it's something that we should have, we, we have to take the lead on. I think when I brought this up like a year ago, I was told that it was Willowbrook's intersection, but I confirm with both, uh.
Yeah, Dan, do you know?
Yeah, there's, uh, there is some, quite a bit of history, and the most recent history is we tried to even work with Willowbrook in regards to a, a study. While we did not participate with that study, there was a study that was conducted by Willowbrook for a traffic signal.
Mm-hmm.
The traffic signal, believe it or not, did meet, did not meet justification, okay? So by not meeting justification, there was no federal monies, if you want to say, available, such as Bailey and Plainfield Road.
Mm-hmm.
There was a grant available. If we're looking at a light at that intersection, traffic signal, you're probably looking at close to $750,000.
Right.
Okay, so, again, that's the information that we had, but to put stop signs, I think, I would have to say, number one, a stop sign warrant, would, stop sign study slash warrant would have to be conducted. My biggest concern would be the stacking. Once you start developing the stacking, you have environmental issues of the stacking that was not there before, whereas the lights, the traffic signal can be timed to accommodate less stacking.
Okay.
The stacking issue is the fumes and everything for the residents that live right along there.
Correct.
That's, that's a big issue, yeah.
Right.
That's why we've avoided doing, we've tried the overhead light, but actually, well, we know there was another fatality years ago.
Mm-hmm.
But it was drunk drivers, both times.
Right.
Yeah, so, how do you stop that?
And the overhead light, it was the yellow, it was a yellow and red, actually.
Yes, a caution light.
And that was, it was found to be that, that was ineffective.
Yeah.
At best, so that's when we went to the solar, solar panels for the stop signs.
Well, I think with the increased traff, the increase of traffic coming off of Route 83, it's kind of, you know, it, it's increased over time, right? So when I look at the data, you know, in 2016, there were three accidents, and then it went up to 13, and then it went to 10 in 28, 13 in 2017, and 10 in 2018. Now, Willowbrook is saying that they've came to the table, and they said, "Hey, we'll, we'll, we'll help with this project." They've built out their lanes for a street light, but the city administrator is saying that we totally didn't want to, you know, do it. I understand that stacking is an issue, but I think that, you know, safety first would be in our best interest, and.
Well, yeah, a couple things in addition to that, I, you know, we had a, we've done a lot of traffic-related work in town, going back several years with our CLOA study. If the city were to look to do anything there, we have a traffic consultant we have used, professional engineer, CLOA, who does an analysis. I did talk, talk to the chief a bit, the accidents were up. I don't know if the traffic on 83 and Plainfield affected things, because that's been under construction now with the, you know, with the lanes and the, and the new shopping center there, which obviously, that affects traffic patterns, brings new traffic there. You know, at one point, we looked at it again a couple of years ago, and there, a number of the accidents are, are things that would, a stop sign wouldn't have helped, or things like that.
Yeah.
But if, if the council wants to proceed, then it would be, really, the authorization would be for a traffic study at that.
Right.
We would have to have a consultant look at that. But again, as Dan mentioned, when we look back, a couple of years back at Willow, at Willowbrook, we did talk to them, and made grand application, and it did not meet the warrant, so it wasn't a matter of fact, it wasn't a matter of us not going forward, it didn't meet the traffic counts for the grant, so nobody was going to do it.
I think I saw that close, I think it was based on a crosswalk, that study.
That's a different study. The crosswalk was a mid-block crosswalk, which was further to the south.
This was an actual traffic count study.
Yeah, this was at the intersection.
To see if it would meet criteria for a light.
Yeah.
So that, that's when we, we did work with Willowbrook, and I think, had that grant come through, I think we probably would have worked with them to finish it out for the grant money, but again, since, when that fell through, the whole project fell through, and, and there had been, as Dan mentioned again, some changes at that intersection over time, based on our traffic analysis and our traffic consultant that looked at it, but traffic patterns and traffic does change over time.
What did, what did the consultant?
Go ahead, Dan, sorry. We didn't participate with Willowbrook, we felt that there was no real benefit to the Darien residents, because they did a geometrical configuration for the westbound, westbound lane at 67th Street, which basically provided an only and a straight slash only. So, you know, again, there was no benefit for Darien residents there.
My final question, what did the consultant recommend? Do nothing, or?
Well, no, we need, he's suggesting we, we go back and do a study.
But back then, the consultant did make a, a change. At one point, that intersection, there was a flashing light there that thought, the thought was that that might actually be confusing people, it was not a four-way stop, it was a yellow flashing light, we took a look at that, changed that to what is there now, and we did, probably at that point even, did traffic counts, we looked at accidents, that was some, that was probably six years ago, so it wasn't, you know, it wasn't as of like two years ago.
Right.
But no, what I'm suggesting, in order for us to do anything, stop signs or stoplights, particularly stop signs, we have a traffic study, because we can't, the city council doesn't have discretion to randomly put up stop signs, and that's why the study, that's, so that is what I'm saying, if the city council wants us to look at that, we can get a proposal from our traffic engineer to take a look at that intersection, and they would look at traffic counts like they did before, they would look at accident data, and they would come up with some recommendation, typically they would, if it warrants it in their opinion, so that would be.
When I look at our accidents, half of those accidents were failed to reduce speed, so when they come off of Plainfield Road and 63rd, they're, they're doing 40, 50 miles per hour going down Claretton Hills Road.
Are those the southbound traffic, traffic accidents, or that, are those the northbound traffic accidents?
Most of them are, are just going southbound, north and south.
Well, they're going.
Because they're coming from an angle, they're coming from an angle.
Well, but if they're coming through, if they're coming down Claretton Hills from Willowbrook, they have the most restrictive speed limits on their portion of Claretton Hills Road.
They're not paying attention to them.
Well, I found out they do, yes.
The consultant really does take a hard look at, just as they did on Bailey, Bailey did not, the county would not put a light up there for years, and they looked at tra, and there was accidents, they looked at traffic accidents, and the type of accidents there, a light would not have helped. So again, that's another thing they will look at, what kind of accidents, what time of the day are they? Obviously, if they're, you know, at 5 o'clock, there's a lot of traffic there, and, and I don't know how, you know, how that would or wouldn't help, or how it would negatively affect traffic. They also look at that, if you put a stop sign there, and that increases traffic further down to the south on Claretton Hills Road, so people start cutting through the neighborhoods, you know, they will look at things like that also. So, you know, that's up to the council. We, we didn't budget money for that, but we, I, I think have some consulting money, we have contingency money, something to look at.
Yeah, I think if we go back further, those numbers might get higher, so, this is just.
Well, we do provide that CLOA report, uh, we, CLOA did it for Willowbrook as well, so we could forward that report to you if you haven't seen it.
Well, that's fine, and, and I think it'd be wise to do one now. The construction on Route 83 has ended, a lot of that was probably cut through traffic, so my hope is that the numbers have dropped since that work has been completed. So, let's.
Well, Greg, Greg did a.
They're not done yet, as a matter of fact, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Are they starting up again?
They're gonna be doing parts of Plainfield for, they still have to do a reconfiguration on the west side of Route 83.
In our town?
Yes, right by.
Oh, shoot, okay.
In front, in front of the Crest Basin, and don't forget.
By the Wendy's.
On, um, by Wendy's over there, I can't think of the name of the street.
We have to move our, we have to move our sign, don't we?
They're gonna move our signs, and we got them.
High, High Road there, yeah.
High Road, yes, thank you.
Chris Hockstead lives right there in the house, right there?
Correct, so that's gonna be a right in, right out, so there's gonna be.
Well, that'll be nice, they'll like that.
There's gonna be some activity there, yes.
And I think, Chief, can you just give, you and I talked a little bit about this, and I guess it's better to have it now while we're talking about that, because my question to the chief earlier today was, what, what, what does the police department do, what do they look at in terms of intersections, accidents, in order to, you know, for the staff to bring things forward? So Chief, maybe you could just give us the.
Yeah, Alderman Vaughn had called and asked about the accidents there, so we've been using a different product, iTech, so from that, I can grab some basic information, and so that's what I did, and that's what I provided. So what we're talking about now is really doing a full analysis of traffic patterns and, and the impact of any changes that were ever made to there, and then also just cause and effect, and understanding what some of those things mean. So driving too fast for conditions might, probably our winter weather, and people were going too fast, hit the brake, slid through the intersection, because I think those are secondary causes, and if they're the secondary causes, not primary causes, primary cause, I believe, on those were mostly failure, failure to yield, or disobeyed stop sign. And again, you gotta understand what those two things mean. If I'm a police officer, and I did not see that accident occur, I can't testify that you disobeyed the stop sign, so I have to relay on prima facie evidence. You don't have skid marks too much anymore with the analog brakes, but you hit the brakes, and I can see those skid marks that went through the intersection, I know that you did not stop, that's prima facie evidence. I have a witness that was standing on the street corner, said that he'd never stopped, went on through, then I can write that stop sign. Other than that, I'm gonna write a ticket for failure to yield, stop intersection, because I don't have to prove that you didn't stop, because I don't know that, whether or not you didn't stop, but I can prove that you're supposed to stop and wait for all traffic, and that you didn't do that because you wound up in an accident. So it takes a little bit more than just looking at those numbers, it takes a little bit more analysis. That's what we would look at and make any kind of recommendation, to see if there was anything in those accidents that would cause a change. There's three ti, three things to look at in accidents, roadway cars and drivers. By far, 99% of accidents are caused by driver error, we know that. Very few are actually caused by roadway and cars, especially now, cars have got all kinds of things on them with, they're braking for yourselves, they're steering for yourself, they're doing all kinds of things, so. But we can look at whatever council wishes.
So staff could take a closer look at the accident reports.
Yeah, because I, I just pulled the data from.
Right.
That we have. I never pulled a report, so.
Correct.
When you pull those reports, you know, some of them you, you kind of know, because was there like five rear-end accidents or something?
Yeah.
And, but we don't know the direction, so it could be people pulling up at the stop sign on 67th, and then somebody hitting them in the rear. It could be somebody going north or southbound, waiting for traffic to clear so they can make their left turn, and they get hit in the rear. There's all kinds of different factors that are just not in that data set. So you have to look at the, pull those action reports and actually look at them to do a full analysis, what, what occurred and what's driving those accidents.
Okay.
So that's, that's a, would be a first step, we could take a closer look at that.
We can take a closer look at the accidents, sure, but I think that all the other things that you're talking about, traffic counts and the like, are, are important part of that whole process, to make sure that you're, we're doing the right thing and not causing a bigger problem.
Right, but that'd be secondary to us looking at it, you know, us looking at it.
Yeah, it's gonna be cheaper for us to pull the reports and look at it.
Maybe the second phase, if that's.
Well, the second phase, the, the CLOA would work with the police department.
Correct, yeah.
Sure.
But we would do, instead of hiring CLOA immediately, I'm just saying, the chief would take a look at the traffic accident reports, the actual reports, see how the accidents happened, do a little due diligence on our end, and then, and then get a proposal from CLOA, so yeah, but they do work hand in hand.
Okay. Yeah, because it sounds like he has to, they're gonna have to delve into all, each one of those accidents to find out more.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
And didn't we used to have the capability to do our own traffic counts?
Yeah, we can do.
Oh, yeah, we can do traffic counts.
Provide them with the last counts as well, so.
How long ago was that?
You know, I don't recall how old that report is, maybe five years old, four years old.
Because we did some along, along 67th Street, the stretch of 67th Street.
And even if we worked with CLOA, that would be something we would do, and then give them the data.
Alderman Clistic, you have a question?
Uh, yes, just really quickly, I, I'm not sure how old Google Maps here is, but I see a lot of vegetation in that area, how are the sightlines coming up to intersection? They're, they're fine in that area.
Yeah, the, the cemetery's right there on the, the north, northwest corner.
Okay. Would be worth it having a few extra more patrols for a little while, I know like on Midway and 83, you always see a police officer in that park, and do we patrol it quite often, or have you?
Yeah, it's a fairly well-used roadway, but we can, you know, we can do some specific stuff on speeding or, over, yeah, putting someplace to watch the stop sign.
All right, is everyone in agreement to, to go, to proceed with a more extensive research by the police department, but also bring in CLOA as a consultant?
Sure. It's always been a problem in corners, so.
We've gone to them many times when we have issues, so, yes.
So we'll get a proposal.
Yes, proposal from them, yes. Alderman MacIver?
So, are we done with that topic?
Uh, yes, please, go, go right ahead with another question.
I had one more, but go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. No.
This might take long, though.
No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Alderman Vaughn.
I think I spoke to Chief Thomas about this already, and I think Tom Clistic brought this up as well. I was over at Hensdale South and speaking to the dean of students over there, and he brought up an issue that they were experiencing, and that, it's not an old, it's not a new issue, it's an old issue, where, you know, they want us to do something about the vaporizing, right? Like, he said, some, some towns have taken initiative to pass, you know, some type of ordinance, where if you're too young to be vaporized, and you get ticketed or something like that, so I'm not sure what the.
And, you know, the, the state legislature just made 21 the smoking age, how does that impact this issue?
Yeah.
I would think it's the same, it's nicotine.
Yeah, it's, I would think so, that, so they, at, when does that go into effect? I, I didn't pay attention to what, it's not a January 1st issue, is it? It's gonna, going to affect.
I would imagine it'd probably be a half-year, or it could be a time of signing, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, so that would affect the vapor, vaporize, vapors.
Vaping.
The vaping.
It should slow it down.
Yeah, correct?
But, um, when that law comes out, I think our ordinance mirrors the state statute, so you're probably going to want to look at it and mirror the state statute, the changes to the statute, depending on what the council wants.
Chief, somebody also called you on that a while back.
Yeah, I thought it was Sarah with you, Ted, didn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so somebody from the school had contacted Alderman Shower, and then from there, we did some look, and then as a part of the follow-up, they said it's no longer a problem, so I think this, it became a problem, and it's not a problem, became a problem, not a problem, this, I think, the third time around.
Or it might be a problem, two different people talking to two different people.
It could be, yeah, yeah, absolutely. But, I think it's time to put it to rest, though, in some way, so wait till the law is finalized.
Find out when the law goes into effect.
And then we can look at what we want to do to update the, our local ordinance.
And let's get it, let's get it moving as soon as possible, yeah.
That's all I got.
So, I'm sorry, you, you're.
That's all I got.
Okay, that's it, okay.
See, that one didn't take long at all.
Sorry.
That's okay. Um, I have, I have one for the chief, in terms of, since we're talking about communications, it's about the police department's communications. I know we've chosen to use Twitter, and I know that the chief said that we have a lot more Twitter followers than we had in whatever we were, in Nixal.
Nixal.
But my concern is, you know, and we've had correspondence, the chief and I over this, there's been a couple of residential burglaries in Farmingdale Village in the last three months, and that information didn't go out to the public. So, in my opinion, you know, the fact that that, you know, when those kinds of things happen, I think you want to put your residents on a, you know, a higher alert, and, you know, more eyes and ears, paying attention, and perhaps if they know about the situation sooner rather than later, something might, they may have noticed something that would help the police in their trying to solve the, the criminal activity. So I don't think that Twitter is effective for, especially for our senior residents. I know my mom is, you know, a senior resident, and, and one of those happened on her street, and I think that, you know, that information should, you know, go out to the public in a more efficient manner, and maybe it's the police department's tweets go to the Darien Facebook page, or something like that, so, because you can do that, you can just, in one keystroke, send it out to a Facebook pa, a linked Facebook page. So I think that the more we communicate with our residents, and the sooner we do it, that obviously within reason, and based on trying to solve the particular crime, I think it's more important to find a, a more effective ways, and more timely ways to get this kind of information out to the public, because I found out about it through a community network, not even.
Well, what about Direct Connect? We pull, we have, we tell, we're telling residents all the time to, to.
I think they get the general reminder, they think what Alderman MacIver is, is a specific issue.
But not knowing something hap, right, this is specifics, you know, that something happened on this 8, 500 block of this street, on this date, around this time, has, if anyone saw it, who's got cameras close by? So I think this, like I said, the sooner we communicate, the more people that get that information, the quicker they might be able to respond and provide important data and facts, or, you know, observation to the police, I think the better.
Chief, doesn't, doesn't your officers canvass the area around the burglary site?
Absolutely.
And then they check with residents, so they're doing that due diligence right there at the ex, at the, at the scene of the crime.
Right, what, but I mean, they're not telling, so, one happens on January, and then just literally two half-blocks over, another one happens in, in, in March, so I'm sure that they didn't canvass the people two blocks over to be more dil, you know what I mean? I think you, I think you have to spread a wider net of communication, so that people are like, "Oh, shoot, you know, I don't lock my door, or I don't close my garage door."
Do you think, do you think Twitter, sending the tweets to, to Facebook would get to the seniors that you're worried about?
No, I'm just saying that Twitter for sure isn't, you know, I, I mean.
And we know Nixel wasn't doing the job either.
But I think, you know, as a, um, with, with social media and the types of communication that are out there, I think we can do a better job getting information out to our residents, and what that, that matter is, I'm not a social media expert by any means.
Yeah, 'cause I'm relying on you to come up with a solution, 'cause you're, uh, you're throwing this.
Like I said, that's one thing, because people may look at, you know, like my mom follows, you know, she's a, she's on Facebook all the time, believe me. I hope you're not watching, Mom, and I'm not snitching.
The real question is how immediate we get the information out.
Yeah, how do we do that?
How immediate, because the information, Sylvia, you mentioned like in January, that would've come out in our press, in our weekly press release that the staff puts out. That's not immediate. That's, you know, a, a press release we put out later, you know, maybe a week after.
That goes on Direct Connect, doesn't it, uh, press releases?
The press releases, um, I thought we had linked that to the, uh, press releases, but if, if it doesn't, we could certainly link that, we could put that on Facebook.
Or even.
It's not as, I don't think it's as quick as Sylvia's saying, 'cause that could happen on a Monday, and that press release might come out.
But it's, it's better than like three months later, you know, which is that one, you know.
Well, the press release doesn't come out three months later.
No, it's four or five days later.
Yeah, four or five days. So if we even link that, which at one point we were, so I'm gonna have to check if, if we are, if we are not linking that now or putting that on Facebook. Because I had thought, at one point we were, and we'll make sure we put that.
Yeah, I just think that, what, the more we can provide communications through various avenues, the more people we can touch. And that's all, you know, I think, you know, it's just, it's becoming easier and easier to reach a lot more people. It's not just a phone call or waiting for the newspaper, um, so it would be, you know, I think it would be helpful.
We have, we have an app for Twitter for Darian Police, correct?
Correct.
All right, do we have one for Facebook?
Not the police, it's, it's the city of Darian. I don't think you have to have separate.
Why wouldn't we have it for, for Facebook? I mean, especially when there's.
No, I'm saying we are, we, we have that press release.
Okay.
That the chief, that the staff puts out once a week, and I'm emailing now to Mary to make sure we're getting that out on Facebook and out on Twitter.
Yeah.
Right.
So, uh, and, uh, I'm sorry, in Direct Connect.
Yeah, 'cause Sylvia's right, I mean, when somebody tweets something, there's probably ten times more people looking at Facebook versus Twitter, especially.
Depending on the demog, you know, I, I follow both, so I get alerts that the police department tweeted something.
Correct.
But even the tweet regarding those two incidents was very general. It wasn't like, you know, neighborhood-specific or anything like that. So, again, it's not necessarily helping those in the areas where the activity is happening.
How specific, uh, chief, how specific can they be in describing the location?
I think what Alderman McGyver is talking about is, well, a couple of things. One is that, um, if you just put out the press release, you're relying on the neighbor, neighborhood, community to link those two, um, incidents, um, together. You know, they had received a tweet or a Facebook page or a notification in January, and now there's another one in March, they might not put those two together, so it might be upon, incumbent upon the police to make that notification, put that out. And then, um, uh, what we can put out, kinda depends, mostly, the location we put in, the Hundred Block, not the specific location.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, put in that, you know, it's the second one in exit period of time, and reminders to lock the stuff up.
Yeah.
Be a little bit more specific than the general, you know, I think there was five or six reminders about locking stuff up and, uh, putting stuff out of sight and those type of things.
Yeah.
With Twitter, you only get a hundred and sixty bytes or whatever.
And so here's the tweet, let's make sure Darian doesn't become a big easy. Lock your stuff, lock your vehicles, make sure valuables are out of sight, leaving garage doors open at night is also too common, two times check, let's watch out for each other, see something, say something. So that's not telling people in Farmingdale Village that, hey, you know, in the last three months, there's been some, you know.
Where, where did you take that from?
This is, this is the Darian Police Department tweet. This is a tweet from six days ago.
Okay.
So, I mean, I do follow it, and of course, you know, like, some of that kind of stuff.
You have your own, you have your own, uh, network for your whole, your, yeah, don't you?
So, I push stuff out, but I'm saying that we can, the police department could, and, and, and again, it's just, we're just talking about communication is, you know, they could, I could easily right now push this out to Facebook with one keystroke.
You can link both accounts, you can, you can link Twitter and Facebook together, where it's one post.
That's something, and, I don't know, maybe for people that are only on, like, check the Darian website, whatever. I'm just saying that let's, let's really noodle on trying to get, you know, more specific and, um, you know, reach as many people as possible.
Okay, sounds, sounds like we have given staff direction.
I noticed recently FEMA, the federal government, has been using Nextdoor for more precise accuracy. Is that something maybe we can look at for the police department, using Nextdoor? Seems that the federal government's using it for...
Well, that's where the, that's, that's where this information, that's where people were talking about it. The residents were talking about that, um, and Melinda's in the audience, she's, um, actually part of the Farmingdale Village, um, Neighborhood Watch, and so, uh, Nextdoor was where the residents were talking about, hey, did you hear this happened here? And they're like, no, but, you know, it, it also happened, and, and that's really where all this information was coming to get. So that, the other part of it is, then you don't get bad information when it's coming from the correct department.
You want it from the horse's mouth.
Instead of having people just, you know, speculating or whatever, so I think it's just for our own good as well.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
We do, just to clarify, and, and, and I'm, I'm hearing a better way to put it on Facebook, but we do have it in our weekly Direct Connect, uh, on a side column where it says View Darian Police Department Weekly Incident Report, which is the press release that we send out, and I thought that was on there, so that's on there, so that's one way we're getting, but maybe we need to make it easier to see, we'll, we'll, we'll work on it.
And maybe something on Channel Six, like one of our, you know, ways that you can, you know, all the different ways you can connect with Darian, you know, put that out, you know, that should be pretty easy, 'cause people do look at that, so.
Brian, who's our social media person?
We have a company that create, help create the new website.
Our social media is our staff, so Mary Belmonte is the one who physically takes care of these things, like the Direct Connect and things, and it's the staff working with Mary to decide what information wants to get, and Dan will send Mary a number of things, uh, the police department will talk to Mary, and Mary and I then kind of put things together, like the Direct Connect, every, every Friday, um...
So we have to be careful about what we post, you know, there's some things we can't post.
Well, of course, yeah, yeah.
But the things we're, I'm hearing tonight are really simple, it's more linking, it's more getting it out, where we're putting it now, but a few more, here, this is simple. We can do this by this weekend, you know.
And, and you know what, if something is, you know, like, if, if, if it's like a bunch of DUIs or whatever are in that report, you know, people maybe look at it week after week, they don't know. Maybe when there is something that's kind of elevated, maybe in our Direct Connect, we call attention to it.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, you know, there was an incident this week, you know, please read this for more information, whatever.
Yeah, I remember years back when we had a lot of activity, you know, in the, um, by the golf course, all, all those residential areas. We did, we put exactly what you're talking about.
Well, yeah, we, when Chief, uh, Tom, uh, Chief Brown first came on, we really get into it.
Yeah, there was the problems in the, all the areas we're seeing, so, obviously if something like that happened, or patterns or things, you know, we, we would put more direct information out.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
That might be something for, um, the next alderman in Ward Six. To, uh, host some, um, home parties, not parties, uh, home information and bring the chief out to, uh, to, uh, discuss issues. So, okay, um, any more receiving of Communications, Alderman Belzick, we almost forgot.
Actually, I'm just following up on what Alderman Vaughn said, uh, the Twenty-One and Under Act in Illinois that's at, on the governor's desk, uh, would be effective July one.
Okay, yeah, so, it'll be after the school, it'll be after school, this school year, but, uh, we, we can give that information to the school, too, so they can enforce it themselves besides us. Okay.
Tickets.
What's that?
It's revenue right there.
Oh, no, no, you tell the kids to stop, no, it's not ticket. If you, do you look at our monthly police report, we give more warnings than we give tickets. Have you noticed that?
Yes.
Uh, okay, let's move on to, um, oh, I, under commu, receiving of Communications, I just wanted to say thank you to the Neighbors Magazine for hosting the, uh, the, the mayoral debate last Thursday. They are going to be having the full tape of the, um, of the debate on YouTube, and, uh, they are going to be sharing that location to us, so we can put that information on Direct Connect. Uh, let's move to the mayor's report, and I have no mayor's report this evening. Let's move to the city clerk's report.
I just have one item, Madam Mayor, um, early voting started today and goes through March thirtieth. The closest, uh, place for us to do early voting would be at the Downers Grove Village Hall. There, um, and their hours are from eight-thirty AM until seven-thirty PM, that's Monday through Friday, and on Saturday from nine until five, and they do have a list of other places here at City Hall, and I do understand that it is on Direct Connect.
Okay, city administrators' report?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, department head informations, police department, uh, did you wanna go over your monthly port, report, Chief Thomas?
Uh, this time around, the, um, clerk was gone, so I had to do all the numbers, so, um, the only thing in there is the, the numbers, there's not a narrative. Had to reteach myself how to do this Facebook spreadsheet.
Yes, um, any questions for the chief? I think we've already done that. Okay, Dan, Dan, municipal services report?
Yeah, I'd just like to take a moment to, um, address an issue. Obviously, it's, it's springtime again, and it's a twofold issue. Number one is, obviously it seems like all the trash now all of a sudden seems to get more noticeable. Um, you know, Public Works is doing their job, if you wanna say, by picking up, uh, you know, county right-ofways, um, even the interior streets, all the right-ofways, parkways, but residents, you know, we're also asking for your help, too. You know, in some cases, there's, uh, neighbors that have been out of town, are still out of town, you know. If you could take a couple of minutes, walk over there, pick up some of their trash, and, you know, whether we like it or not, um, you know, we've had some high winds this year, so, again, you know, let's try to keep the town clean. Um, and the second, uh, portion is, uh, code viol, property maintenance code violations. Um, some of you may have noticed that there's, uh, probably more fences down this year than there's been in the past. Uh, obviously, again, we've had some very high winds, um, while we're sympathetic to the causes of it, uh, we are writing residents, you know, notifications, hey, um, you know, get your fence fixed, and, uh, that's one example. In some cases, uh, there's also, you know, other issues, whether it's dilapidated, um, siding, gutters falling down. Um, and with that, while we, the city, there's, there's a process, and that process basically starts with a notification to the resident, and that process, that process itself is approximately a thirty-day process. Once that's ignored, if you wanna say, uh, another, a ticket is then issued. With that ticket being issued, we then have to wait for the local traffic courts to assign us a, uh, court date. In some cases, um, the, uh, ticket will be null and void because the resident has, her property owner has complied. In some cases, the property owner doesn't comply, we go to traffic court, the property owner does not show up in some cases. So, you know, we'll, uh, sometimes the judge will basically say, okay, let's extend it for another, uh, twenty days till the next court docket comes around, which is probably two to three weeks or a month, depending what the court schedule is. Um, once that happens, and then again, it's a default, let's say that their property owner does not show up for their violation, uh, basically it's another default judgment. So what does that really mean at the end of the day? At the end of the day, so you have a couple parking tickets that may amount to, uh, a hundred dollars at best. There's no arrest warrant issued for that person or property owner. So in that case, we end up going to lawsuits. Uh, when we go to lawsuits, usually it's a demand letter that will have our council, city council, I should say, our council, uh, write that property owner, in some cases it's adhered to, in some cases it's ignored. And then we go to, and then again, this process itself takes another thirty to sixty days pending. So by the time you put a property maintenance, um, code violation in perspective, there's a potential that it can go up to close to a year before it's finally heard in court. But at the same time, you know, I, I think we need to all stay, be cognizant of what's going around, you know, what's, uh, what's happening, what's being dilapidated, so residents have to call us so we could try to, you know, nip things in the butt, you know. Now, what does that basically mean? Uh, trees, for example, there's, there's dead trees that may even be in a person's backyard. Obviously, we, the city staff, don't, can't see that, but if a neighbor sees it, or a resident sees it, give us a call. You know, that's something that we could do enforcement on. Uh, trash, if a, if a rear yard, for example, is very unsightly, unsanitary, whatever the case is, give us a call, provided that we can go into that complainant's yard, and we could observe it and take pictures of it, you know, we have that opportunity to review that and take a look at, you know, what opportunities there are. We try to work very closely with residents. In some cases, unfortunately, it becomes somewhat of a mental health issue, so we have to be very cognizant of that, along with the court systems as well. I just kinda just wanna put that out there, since spring is, uh, coming, so if there's any questions, be more than happy to entertain them.
Well, the, I, I'm so glad you went through that process, because we have had residents call us and say, what's going on? Why haven't you done anything, when they don't understand the process, what we have to go through to protect people's rights, to, to, you know, and, and so, as we know, we, we've gone on a year or more with some situations, and, um, so I'm glad you brought that up, how long it, it sometimes takes. Uh, for our attorneys and the, on the, on the council, they are, they, I'm sure they're well aware of the process.
Dan, I'm not aware.
Alderman Belzick, please chime in.
You know, Dan, I'm not aware of any, we're not able to get into compliance, you know, I know there's a couple now, but we can go, I mean, back for a few years, and there's a number that we all remember, that, you know, a lot of these, uh, you know, end up their hoarder situations, you know, sometimes on the inside, outside. Um, it does go to great lengths and, and, and a lot of work. Sometimes the Health Department will come out, sometimes the, the police, you know, working together with Dan's department. Uh, but, but most of them, you know, you have been able to, to gain compliance, maybe even have the house demolished, because there's noth, nothing else, and, and sometimes, you know, if you have a death in the family and the relatives live out of state.
And they're fighting over the property?
Fighting over the property, but.
Oh, yeah, and.
And we've had that.
A classic example, real quickly, just reminded me of, uh, recently we had an issue, probably within the last six months, uh, to where, um, you know, we, the city, had intervened and said, hey, we're willing to help you clean up, can we put a lien on the house in order to help, you know, clean this up? It worked out. Um, you know, I'm not saying that works out all the time, but, you know, there's different situations, uh, unique situations, and, you know, there's probably three, three hundred different stories out there.
Oh, yeah.
We had that one in Carriage Greens, in my ward, that went on several years, and, uh...
Yeah, and it was, it was a tough, that was a tough one.
That was, that was really tough, and Social Services got involved, when Social Services got involved, then we were able to deal with that, but that was.
She was, yeah, she had to be declared mentally incompetent, removed from her own home.
Well, the, the show Hoarders is not far-fetched, you have that in every community. The house you're talking about, Joe, a bunch of us were there at some point, you couldn't, you could only open the front door about a foot, and as soon as you walked in, you walked into a mound of.
It took seventeen, seventeen dumpsters to clean out that house.
Well, we had that, was it on Bayberry? I mean, in Ward, I shouldn't say that, on, on Ward Three? But that, that's the one you're referring to, that we got, uh, we, the, the son stepped in, and we were able to resolve that with a lot of, too much trouble.
Actually, there was a couple of them, yeah.
And, and unfortunately, as everyone knows, when we're speaking of hoarding, there's no law against hoarding. So, um, you know, what's, somebody what we believe perceive as junk is somebody's treasure. So they may have, you know, they have the opportunity to, to stack the stuff from the floor to the ceiling
when it becomes unsanitary, with unsanitary-like conditions, then it's a different, um, you know, philosophy in enforcement.
Yeah. Yeah, very tough situation. Alderman McGyver?
Is there, um, I don't know, like, we, I know in the past we looked at those, um, Coach Light programs, and we do some things with mailboxes, and obviously we do the programs with, um, you know, where we do the sharing on the, um, reducing the, um, drainage, uh, issues in, in residence yards. I mean, I know, you know, fences unfortunately are really expensive. I mean, is there anything that we can do, like, through, and I'm not saying that we pay for that, but is there anything we could do to assist residents, like, through some kind of community enrichment program? Like, I don't know, some deal with the Home Depot, or, um, put out a bid for...
I can't, you know, I can't agree with you more, we've tried that. Matter of fact, we've tried a couple of different programs, uh, just with the fencing program along our main corridors, whether it was Plainfield Road, uh, all the way from, uh, Seventy-Ninth up to Sixty- seventh Street. Also, we did it on Plainfield Road. Um, you know, we just more recently worked with the ones on the corner of Seventy-Fifth Street and Plainfield. Um, I, I wish there was a good answer, the answer, you know, the, not everyone is willing to participate. I've had residents tell me, don't call me again about this, or don't write me a letter about this.
Well, in lieu of being cited, especially those that are in disrepair, and now they're gonna get into a ticketing and potentially escalating it to the court level, I mean, I don't know, it's just something to think about, that, you know, I don't know if there's anything.
Well, there was a time, and I don't know if we call the Darian helping Darian, we had a, a list of contractors.
Oh, sure.
That we could recommend to residents to go out them and help them in those certain situations. Do we still have an active list?
Basically, what we do is, you know, depending on what the trades are, uh, we at least provide a minimal of three. Of those three, you know, how we look at the recommendation is that these P, these vendors have been coming back to the city for continuous permits for several years. So there's, you know, we're not just pulling somebody out of a, a favoritism, if you wanna say, sort of some track record of how many times they've been in the city hall, whether it's an electrician, whether it's a concrete person, um, bricklayer, whatever the case is, plumbers, um, you know, here's a list of three, sometimes we give them five, it all depends, but, you know.
Do those, um, the ones that are, you know, that are on the list, do they, do we require that they provide references? Like, customer references, so that we know that they're, you know, not just getting permits, but they, they actually do a good job?
We encourage residents to get the references, and again, if you're, if you're a vendor, you're more than happy to supply references, um, if, you know, you're a quality person. So we've never had a complaint on anyone that we have provided a list to, so.
Is there a cost for the fence permit now, or do we waive it?
It's ten dollars.
Is it ten dollars?
Yeah, it's ten dollars.
Yeah, it's very incidental, yeah.
Yeah, it's minimal, yeah, okay.
And a lot of those cases, I'm sure it's just putting it back up.
Yeah, right, right, so, okay, yeah, I just, I'm just trying to think of ways to help and assist and encourage to, like you said, keep up, you know, help them.
You know what, I really, I'm proud of the city of Darian, that, how much we do, do that behind the scenes without.
Right.
People knowing, you know.
One of the problems that, and we've talked about before, on a corridor, you could have a fence that's not in disrepair, but there's ten different styles all along.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, it's not like if it was a new subdivision, you know, on Lamont.
Well, Bowton, we have it on Bowton.
Yeah, where a newer subdivision, that whole fence line is the same.
Right, right.
It looks better, so some of these, and some of these, Dan, they're, they're maybe, they're not as, you know, they, they don't look great, but they might not be a violation either.
That's, that's exactly it, you know, whether it's red, well, you might not like red, but everyone, he might like it. So again, you know, we don't have a landscape aesthetic, aesthetic code, if you wanna say.
Have we ever looked at putting a secondary fence, so you have the neighbor's, you know, property owner's fence here, but then going a foot or two offset and just putting a Darian fence along the whole Seventy-Fifth Corridor or Cass?
Yes, we are.
If you theoretically do that and put that on the city property versus asking all the residents, we just do it ourselves a foot off there, and whether it is dilapidated.
With all due respect, I would not recommend that you put a fence back-to-back, because then all of a sudden... then all of a sudden, you start to have the weed issue, the garbage issue. So if we were to do a program, which I think is what I'm hearing, you know, we would have to do it citywide, Plain, you know, Cass Avenue. And we, and we looked at that. I think it was several years ago we discussed that.
It's been recent, yeah.
In our comprehensive plan, that is one of the items that is pointed out, corridor improvements, as well as individual parcels. And we did bring that up with the council maybe three years ago. I don't remember exactly.
It's probably that term.
In terms of capital projects, should we start budgeting for things? And everybody liked it, but it did not make a list, a funding list, so.
Yeah, more, more recently, we even allowed residents for more privacy, to allow eight-foot fences along Plainfield Road because of the elevation differences.
Yeah. Okay. A lot of great discussion this evening. That's a very important discussion. A lot of, and our viewing audience, I hope they appreciate to know some of these services that we do actually offer.
Mayor, now that, now that I'm thinking one step further, you know, Dan had asked residents to call in. A lot of residents don't like to call in. So we do get emails or phone calls anonymous. We check those out, just like if somebody leaves their name.
Yeah.
Because again, we do remind people, once they send emails to us, those are public documents. If somebody's complaining about a neighbor, you know, we might get an email that says, oh, I want to complain about my neighbor. Please don't tell them it was me. Well, if the neighbor wants to FOIA a document, they'll find out. So we do encourage people to let us know, but how they do that is up to them.
Yeah, yeah. All right. With that said, let's move to the treasurer's report. And are you going to cover the warrant?
Yes, I will cover the warrant. Thank you, Mayor. The warrant number 18-19-22 is before the city council. The total expenditures are a subtotal of $461,220.50. And the two payrolls for the dates 3/14/19 totaled $251,130, for a total to be approved by the city council of $712,351.23.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak, discussion? The roll, please.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The monthly report?
Yes, Mayor. I will round a bit on the numbers. Some of these are a bit larger in the millions. But the revenue expenditure report for February 28, 2019, the general fund revenue is approximately $13.7 million year-to-date, and the expenditures are approximately $10.9 million for a current fund balance of $4,391,200. The water fund revenue, $7.8 million. The expenditures year-to-date are $5.2 million. And the current modified cash balance is $3,663,605. The motor fuel tax year-to-date revenue, $483,000. Expenditures, $447,000 for a current fund balance of $425,276. The water depreciation fund revenue year-to-date, approximately $3.4 million. The expenditures year-to-date, approximately $1.5 million for a current modified cash balance of $2,46,590. The capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue, $246,000. Expenditures, approximately $3.9 million for a current fund balance of $5,390,293. Thank you.
Any discussion by the Alderman for any of the numbers? Questions? Yes, Alderman Clistic?
This is for the police department, page number, it doesn't show up, but it calls out integrated response to active threats, official jump. It's only-
You're talking about the warrant?
The warrant, yeah.
Okay, we're there to the warrant. Sorry, do you have a question on the warrant?
Yeah, this mentions in the justification of expenses, integrated response to active threats, official jump.
Officer jump.
It was a class they went to?
It's officer jump. It's a class you went to.
Class, okay. I didn't understand what, integrated response to an active jumper?
Probably turn that one around now.
That was pretty quick.
Changed the whole meaning.
Okay, so that, all right. Any other questions on the, on the revenue expenditure report? Okay, then let's move on to standing committee reports, to any of the chairman reports. Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder, Municipal Services meets next Monday, March 25th, 6:30 here in the council chambers.
Alderman, Alderman McIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next meeting for the Darien Police Committee is scheduled for Monday, April 15th, Tax Day, at 6:00 p.m. in the police department training room across the parking lot, pending agenda items.
And Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next admin finance meeting will be held on Monday, April 1, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. in our upstairs meeting room.
Okay, thank you. And let's move on to questions, comments, agenda-related. The council has had the opportunity to go over the agenda this evening, so I don't think there's any questions from you. Is there anyone in the audience that have any questions on the items on the agenda this evening? Then let's move on to old business. There being no old business, we'll move to the consent agenda, which has no items on it. And we have one item under new business this evening. It's a motion to grant a waiver of the $50 a day fee for our, for the Class J temporary liquor license for Our Lady of Peace. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman McIver, discussion? Then the roll, please.
Marques?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The motion has been approved. Next item is, again, questions, comments, and announcements, this time from the council, if there's any. Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With regard to that, this is the Our Lady of Peace Annual Fish Try. It's the third annual fish try. It takes place this Friday from 4:30 until 7:30. It's $13. Pre-sale tickets, $15 at the door. You need to come early because, I mean, and it is a good meal, but you need to come early because the place really does get packed.
What is it? What group is this?
It's the Home and School of the Knights of Columbus, as well as the parish. It's all three ministries.
Is that on Cass Avenue and Westmont?
No, it's us. It's Our Lady of Peace and the gym.
Well, that's what this, I thought it was for a different event, okay.
And then I just wanted to, Troop on O1, Boy Scouts had their pancake breakfast yesterday, which was, which was very, very nice. I just wanted to congratulate them on their, their event.
Okay. There are no other questions from the council? And from the audience, no questions? Then I ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman McIver, seconded by Alderman Vaughn, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.